Have you signed before you?
Yeah, or you can call me. I'll come back in and sign them.
Okay. And then I also have the PBC meeting, so if we could actually call minutes, we could call that meeting to order. It would make my minute writing a lot easier.
First, you mean?
Yes. And approve the minutes. So let me, that's the regular meeting.
And then do we also need to, do we actually reorganize the board and the Public Building Commission before we adjourn? That way it's...
You could do that, or we could call another PBC meeting when we get ready to pay payables, and then you guys could organize that PBC at that time.
Because we're not sworn in yet, is that? So after 11:00 or whatever.
Yeah. Or, or in February, we'll have to pay a bill in February.
You won't have a new commission when we do the PBC, first PBC meeting.
Right. I see what you're saying.
So like last year, we didn't even meet until February 12th and reorganize, so maybe when we...
Just do it then.
Yeah. Okay. And then this is where we are at for the end of the year, recording. And those were the PBC minutes there.
We can go straight into the PBC, right?
Yes. You could.
That's the information we received from Bob Lovelace, and then that newspaper article was asked to make a copy of, which you already have. So that's from Bob Lovelace.
This whole packet? Oh, this is the bylaws. Okay.
Okay. I think that's all from...
Okay, we'll call the Public Building Commission meeting to order. We need to approve the minutes from the February 12th, 2018 meeting, and the August 6th, 2018 meeting.
Do I have one? That thing was presented. We didn't approve the February ones in the August meeting?
No, we don't want just the current ones to hear.
Oh, okay. Okay. So Aljo Wallace moved to pay the bonds and reimburse the county for expense in the amount of $371,061.79, seconded by Terry Finch, motion carried. And Aljo Wallace moved to retain the same officers for 2018, with Terry Finch as president, Alexis Woot as vice president, and Aljo Wallace secretary, seconded by Terry Finch, motion carried. That was February 12th. And then on August 6th, meeting called to order at 8:00 a.m., Alexis moved to approve the payment in the amount of $75,050. Darn, we might need a dollar. It says 75,050, and there's no cents. Maybe correct that. Seconded by Aljo Wallace, motion carried, and adjourned at 8:04 a.m.
For those of you that don't know, the Public Building Commission is the organization that financed the hospital renovation. It's done through a public building commission.
Which is essentially the same board.
Yeah, essentially, it's the same board, but it's just a different function, so...
Oh, I see. They, they approved the minutes from 2017 at the February meeting. Okay. I'm going to approve the minutes from February 12th and August 6th, 2018, as corrected, which was only a technical correction.
Second. Been motion or second to approve minutes to Public Building Commission meetings. Is there any further discussion? As corrected, I'm saying. If not, all of us in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Is there any further business for the Public Building Commission today? If not, we'll adjourn. And I'll call the meeting of the Board of Accounting Commissioners to order. Okay, we have a new pay resolution that we did last week.
Do you want to do minutes first, maybe?
Oh, yeah, we could do that. I'm going to leave this correspondence here for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Dawn, under Highway Department, would you please add in that I requested the Director of Public Works to, I guess it would be to unify their tactics on tree trimming, especially under bridges. We've kind of spent a little bit of time talking about that, and I would like that, I would definitely like that to be followed up on, so I would like it to be in the minutes, since there are some other things in there that we talked about as far as transferring money so that we could look at doing stone bridges, et cetera.
Can I just put it as well something?
Sure, yeah. And then if you go down under Hospital, it just, there's a misspelling on my name in the middle, in the middle of the paragraph.
I keep thinking I'm going to fill that in, so I don't have to...
You mean it doesn't recognize it as a normal word?
No. And they're all red, so they're all incorrect spellings according to, so it's...
I know. It doesn't flag you. I, I understand. I still don't understand that. I think that's all I see.
Moved to approve as correcting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all of us in favor to say aye.
Aye. Okay, so then today's correspondence, we have organizational bylaws from the Lincoln County Council on Aging, along with letters of intent to serve on the board by, let's see, March Schneider, Judy Olvers, Charlene Watson, Bob Lovelace, Jeannie Fries, and Kathy Moss.
Someone was I know on the front that they have one from Nancy that they couldn't find it, but...
Yes. Thank you, I did see that. Forgot. She's busy.
I also received a letter from Jack Crispin. He does not wish to seek another term on the Hospital Board of Directors as he go off this year.
I did not look that...
Okay.
Okay, let's do this while we're still here.
So Dawn, do we need to check all of these, or had you already looked at them according to what they put in their budgets? Or do we need to look at...
It's just the 25 cents?
Yeah, it's just the 25 cents for all of them. I might have DeeDee do it from the...
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm asking the wrong person.
No, that's okay. I do the resolution part, but I have her updated, so...
It's all of DeeDee discussing 25 cents. And I told the department heads about the other 25 cents and the, and the ballots too.
Okay. And does that include elected officials for their own position? I'm only asking because when they, when they submit their budget, they can adjust the salary portion as they see fit. So I just wanted to know if you had looked at that.
The, the elected officials is included with 25 cents in the week.
It's just whatever it was last year plus 25 cents?
Yes. Well, or $44, did you do the $44?
Yes.
For the, okay.
And then I told the other elected officials to ask them probably if they would do something again when you guys do Mary's.
If they change their budget? Oh, okay.
Because all of their budgets included 50 cent increases, so...
But the pay, but the pay rate adjustment, you've already checked for all of them, is just the 25 out of the 50?
Just the 25, okay. Or the $44.
Yeah. I understand. Is this list for us? Is that the, the little one?
Yes, one will give each of your guys a copy, and the long one is the...
Yeah, the, okay. And we sign this one?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve Resolution 2019-1, pay rates including cost of living for the year.
All of a second. Any further discussion? Not all of us in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Are these, this stack of bills here from Midwest Commercial date cleared back?
I looked back, and we haven't paid any of them. We haven't paid them since 2017, so I'm not really sure. I kind of remember receiving invoices before, but I don't know, maybe I just didn't get them back to pay, but I got that in on the email today, so... And it may be somebody else that I was thinking that we hadn't paid.
I don't know why. We've paid them all year. But we're not.
Have you, do you remember seeing the invoices? I was going to look back on my emails, but I just haven't been...
I don't, we're tall, but I must have go back and looked through the invoices.
I would have thought that they would have sent to State Department each month.
I would have thought so. I think we probably need to look into that a little bit, because arguably it is. You say you just got it today?
Mm-hmm, from that. Years tend to run together, but I kind of thought we had discussed one of those at one point in time, because I think Alexis had a question whether or not we actually own the water and dryers, and we do own the water and dryers. But that could have been in 2017, and we just, I don't know, it's a little unusual, but yeah, it's an entire year's worth of bills.
Would you mind asking Hannah to look back and...
I already did.
Okay. We haven't had those invoices, okay? I just want to make sure we weren't paying it twice.
So these are all repairs?
Yes, for the year.
Moving the machines.
Yeah. We had to move them through the remodel and stuff.
So the total is $2,180.38 to Midwest Commercial Laundry Equipment for parts and service.
We can go ahead, I guess, and take Anna Marie. We can work on those, or you guys can work on the blazer, or whatever you want to do.
I would like to request executive session with myself and any member of the transportation bus board that is present, any team employee.
Okay, so...
Non-elected personnel?
Non-elected personnel, and then would this be a discipline issue? A concern? Okay. Do you have your cheat sheet?
I do, Laura.
I'm sorry, mine's buried.
I had it last week, but I might have left it on the table.
Thank you.
All right, then, keep chatting with me.
Would we be able to include the Commissioner-elect? Because today is the day that he changes everything. Okay. So I move to enter into executive session, and how long do you think you need?
15 minutes.
For 15 minutes? To discuss the concern regarding an employee. Pursuant to KSA 75, 4319, to be, number... Oh, yes, I skipped it. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The three commissioners, the Commissioner-elect, bus board members present, and HR.
All of a second. I have a motion to second to enter executive session for 15 minutes. Non-elected personnel, all of us in favor to say aye.
Aye. That works, because LaDonna's not coming, so...
Oh, she's not coming?
Right, so we have, she was scheduled until 10:30, so we have plenty of time.
Okay, so Kat is on the board? You said, you said bus board members, so Kat can say?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Rhonda, do you want to go ahead? We're a couple minutes early, but we're going to do a big switcheroo here at 11 o'clock, so...
What I'm asking for is to waive or reduce the fees for the landfill, the library in Sylvan is being renovated, and so all the debris that's from that, we've been, we've got one load that's already been taken to the dump, and then we have another one, possibly a small third. So we were just asking if that would be a possibility.
I don't...
Is it CD pit material, or...
Yeah, it's CD.
Yeah, yeah. It's whatever come out of the old library for the walls and whatever else, so...
I, I don't see a reason why we can't waive the fees.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You need something official?
I can go the board approved, or you can move and approve.
Either way.
Approved is fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was quick.
Yeah.
Got a couple tax abatements, three, I don't know what third.
Oh, I kind of made a mistake almost. Hang on one second. I was gonna... These are the three you're going to approve. My work copies, I normally attach them, but I haven't got the one finished. So those are the dollar amounts for each one. Here is the number up here, and I just have one that I haven't, I always do a hand calculation, and I meant to keep it back, and I would do the hand calculation and then give it to you guys.
Always in case our computer system is not right. Oh, but you might want to know the reasons here.
It says it, it says them right here. One is payment under protest.
Yeah, okay, I see. They're all payment under protest.
All of them are payment under protest, so...
And two are commercial property, one is residential.
So is this, I guess, I don't, these are different than when you guys have the handwritten one attached to it, or do you have it?
She got them.
I just tried to decipher this, and I'm like, here.
I just want to calculate it, the last one. But the last one should match what the computer shows.
So what was the discrepancy, the appraised amount? Was that...
I'm assuming...
Or was it the size, is what I was wondering? Like, if, because they're all land, right?
Well, two are commercial properties here in the city of Lincoln, so it'd actually be the building and the land. And my understanding is that...
I'm saying it's not personal property, it's real property.
It's real property.
And their, their protest was the assessment value?
Yes, when they pay the taxes, they protest at that point in time.
And then Rhonda makes the decision if it's...
Yeah, they have a hearing.
Oh, they did have a hearing?
Yes. Normally, all of those, they have a hearing.
That's what I was wondering, if this is just approved by her, or if, or if every time they go to hearing?
They go to hearing.
For the board, the tax, the board or whatever.
Yeah, and then if for some reason the hearing did not suffice, the person, then they can appeal it to the board of tax affairs.
So who's the hearing?
First, I think. Truett and Rhonda and normally members.
Oh, it's just them? Okay. Okay.
And then they do like comparables, and they compare the buildings and...
Okay.
I've never experienced that myself, but...
Well, that's what I wondered, if it is... Well, that's what I wondered, if it goes immediately to the, but you're saying it first goes just to the office, and not, and they decide it on next, okay. So I move to approve abatements two thousand eighteen, nine, ten, and eleven.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to approve tax abatements. We're gonna have further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so, you guys have approved the resolution, I'm sure I have everything.
Yep.
Which will change around. Oh.
You need to approve this.
Yes, longevity pay.
Longevity.
And when we reorganize this blank sheet of papers for whoever the chairperson is, needs to sign it.
I didn't know what the blank paper was.
I didn't mean to give it to you.
I looked at it a couple different times.
If you're curious, kind of mail.
I thought there was something wrong.
The blank paper, that would be my work.
That was supposed to be for me to remember to do, but... I'm gonna lay it right here, so hopefully I won't forget.
Oh, there's copies for each of the board in the conference.
Uh, what's that? Oh.
So this is just gonna be a separate check?
Yeah.
Yes.
We pay the longevity for the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents.
One second.
Um, I, I have a point of discussion. It seems counterproductive to offer longevity pay to elected officials. I mean, we're exempting ourselves from raises as the commission, therefore we are exempt from longevity pay as well. And it's not anything negative toward the elected officials. I know some people in positions where it's awfully difficult to retain a job for a long period of time, and do well, and be, um, involved. But at the same time, an elected official is not necessarily the same type of employee, as an employee that you would reward for putting in long-term service. So, that being said, I do have, um, a political philosophy against rewarding people for staying in elected positions long-term financially, by the taxes, by the taxpayer, uh, dollar, so I won't be agreeing with that.
There any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close.
Nay.
Rhonda, do you want to adjourn or recess?
I think normally we just recess, but... I think we just normally recess, so...
Good. Do you want to have any business come before us in the next four minutes? If not, we will recess until probably a little after eleven, I guess.
It says quarter after.
Quarter after, okay.
Am I vice chair?
No, I am.
I'm the...
Sorry, Alexis, sorry. You'll call the meeting to order as vice chair to help the reorganization.
Okay. I called meeting to order. And I will ask for nominations for reorganization of the board.
I'll nominate Alexis, for present.
I'll second it.
Nomination in second, for me to serve as chair, any other discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
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 We can take the pressure off of you and have him serve as vice chair again.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Since I don't know anything.
I'll nominate Aljo for vice chair for, uh, two thousand nineteen.
And I'll second that.
Nomination in second, discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know if there was anything above to be near the pile. So Alexis is vice chairman, if I could just get you to sign three times, uh, three random spots how you would normally sign, and then they'll pick one that works to put on the checks.
In years past, we've always had signature stamps, but, um, since they were able to add it to our checks, we haven't done that. If you wish, I have a signature stamp, I still have Aljos, but I don't have, and I haven't had for quite some time. I really never have any for it, if for any reason you guys meet, you approve something, I can always have you sign it the next week, um, once, you know, like if we did a phone...
I'm fine without a phone meeting, so, okay. We will have Jennifer O'Hara coming in at eleven fifteen, and the topic is nursing home. I'm assuming she's bringing correspondence from Attorney Hay that we have hired in Topeka. Okay, so that may be end up being executive session. But I was on the topic, given a, an article, I don't know, some of you may have read it, but it's the most recent state takeover of another nursing home, and it looks like it's included in two thousand eighteen, because it says that in Kansas it was twenty-two nursing homes for the year. And that, of course, includes, I think it was eighteen by that one particular corporation, Sky, Skyline, I think is what it was called, Sky something. But if anyone was interested in reading that, you're more than welcome to it. Basically says that they had found, um, missing narcotics and more than two hundred and forty thousand dollars in unpaid bills. In a forty-five bed facility in Marion County, which ironically is interesting, because that, I, that is not the one connected to their hospital facility. Their hospital facility is county-owned, and they have a combined county nursing home, spa- county-sponsored, subsidized hospital and nursing home. And this one is not, this would be a privately operated, it's called Westview Manor. Is Peabody the only other decent-sized town in Marion besides...
Marion itself.
Besides the county seat, right? I think, there aren't very many, that would be the only other town where sizable to house a nursing home, right?
Strong City, Strong City would be large enough.
Strong?
Strong City.
Okay. I'm not familiar with that area, so...
That's not including Lincoln County, is it, all that?
I'm, I'm excuse, excuse.
That's not including Lincoln County, is it?
No, this is, this is the article talking about the state coming in to take over Westview Manor of Peabody in Marion County. It's a forty-five-bed facility that they had found numerous bills totaling two hundred and forty thousand dollars overdue, and several things went unfixed, broken toilets in the shower in the women's room, and, um, they were even bouncing paychecks, it says, so... It's an interesting read.
Did you say missing narcotics as well?
Did anybody go to jail?
Not yet, not yet. But it does say that, let's see, where did I read that?
Well, the KBI would be investigating that though, wouldn't it?
Well, it would be, it came from K-DADs, because it said somewhere in here that there were complaints filed against the facility, and that's why they came in, because they come and do regular inspections, but they came in specifically because of the complaints that were filed.
How does that work, Alexis, with, uh, the state takes it over, then does the county manage it, or does the state manage it, or what?
Well, the closest thing that I know of to this situation, the one in Wilson was owned by that large corporation that had about eighteen in the, in the state. And this article says that the state, on average, takes over two in a year, so twenty-two this year. But the one in Wilson is still being managed financially by the state, but the state calls in a management company to come and facilitate all the, the stuff...
So they would hire director, director, and manage all that?
Well, they actually, I think they sub out to a management company, so there are several companies that have multiple, either, they're either a small or a large operation, but a lot of them have multiple facilities that they manage. So then they have a headquarters for their business office and their HR and things like that, but they actually hire temporary management staff that then go in and set up their system in that particular facility and implement their strategies to manage it, and then they put it on the market. So it's technically for sale.
So does the county have to contribute funds to that also, or is that all state funded?
Well, it depends, this one that I kind of pulled a few things out of this article to say, this one is a private facility, it's forty-five-bed facility, and it's not county-owned, because the county-owned facility in Marion is connected to their hospital. Ours is county-owned, but we've subbed out by leasing, so... It depends, it, I mean, if there, if there's a subsidy going to it, then I guess they could increase or decrease their subsidy from the county tax dollars, but... This was just interesting, because it's separate from that string of them that went down, because an east coast company had come out and purchased a bunch at one time. I only think, they made it only a year before they ended up going under.
anniversary.
Do you want to?
Yes.
Are you going to request executive session for the entire thing, or...?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so... Is it because we have correspondence from Mr. Hay again?
Yes, and we need to contact him.
Okay. So we will be entering into executive session about the nursing home. And... This is the, we call it the cheat sheet, but it basically has these thirteen reasons.
Reasons to go into an executive session.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to probably get a copy.
Sure. How long are you, how long are you requesting, Jennifer?
Um, I can't. I think he'll be available at eleven fifteen, so if you wanted to go fifteen or twenty, maybe twenty minutes?
Twenty.
That'd be fifty, twenty.
Okay, Howard, twen- twenty minutes, twenty, did you hear me? Um, so then, this says you have to have a statement, which is your reasoning, so we'll say, because we have correspondence from the attorney.
About the, uh, nursing home issue.
Exactly, and then we'll go under, number two is consultation with our attorney, so it has to be the board, because we are the client and the attorney.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion.
One second.
Okay, I, do you want me to word it out for you, Rhonda? Yes, I move to recess into executive session for twenty minutes, for the purpose of discussing correspondence from Attorney Hay regarding Lincoln Park Manor. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, two B. And that's consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship.
Okay, and then I'm gonna approach with...
The board and county attorney, yes.
And then, um, and you said sister handling?
Yes. Oh, and, oh, and phone call with, yeah, correspondence and phone call.
Second.
I second it.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Okay, I'll figure out a time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm missing the agenda. Is Michael here?
Yes.
Okay. We have Michael next on the agenda, but I will say the board has taken no action. We just, we have continuing correspondence with the attorney we hired, Mr. Hay and our county attorney.
I didn't steal it, did I?
I don't think so.
It's just Harry's stuff.
Yeah, no.
How about here? Good morning.
Oh, here it is, here it is. Apologize, we're running behind, but we have Michael on the schedule, and then you, Mr. Lovelace.
I guess I can make this quick as possible since we're running behind. Update on OS 87 Golden Run Bridge. They did get the pier number two poured last week, so pier one and pier two are both poured. They're hoping to start doing, installing false works so they can start forming up for the bridge deck and strip the forms off those piers this week. With this weather, I don't know how that's going to delay, but they've used 34 of 100 working days so far. On OS 105, we got the pile drove last week. We got the cap set, stringer set, and weather's going to have us held up a little bit on that project, but if it freezes a little bit, we should be able to get out there and do some work on that. As you guys were aware, we had a lovely storm over the weekend that produced a lot of rain and some snow. It's been slow going for the blades, trying to get the snow off the roads, trying to find a happy medium, how they can travel, just really inconsistent with it not being frozen underneath and it being real sloppy, so we're trying the best we can there. We did have an issue with two blades yesterday morning that stopped those from working. I believe both of them were, probably could end up being in something along the line of some sensors or something like that, but it derated this to a point where we couldn't operate them. And I was wondering if there's a chance you guys would be interested in allowing us to invest a little bit of money in both of the older cap blades. One of them we had a radiator issue with, and the other one is the driveline coupling between the engine and transmission. To be able to have those up and running if we need them during future storms here, or if you guys do not want to invest in something that we're going to be planning on settling. I mean, it's, it's kind of a toss-up, but when we're short, we're short. I mean, if we can't, if we don't have any equipment around, we're.
Do you have any idea on the cost?
I do not at this time. I just haven't had a chance to look, but I know there's an impending storm this weekend coming too, so.
I think one of them needs to be up and running, at least.
We do have the spare Kamatsu blade that was out also, but.
But yeah, I think, I think one of those.
Get one of them going.
Get one of them going, as long as it doesn't cost a lot of money. At least one of them.
We'll check, see if the radiator can be repaired. If it can't be repaired, it will need to be replaced. Okay, we will, we will work on that then. And that's pretty much all I have.
Yeah, I don't have much, 'cause I'll get back again. I'll do a contest of that, now, that we've been trying to look around and check some roads here this morning, see what they was looking like, and what we need to do, where we need to go next on that stuff, so. Trying to catch up there. Try to get them all going there if we can, quick as we can. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot else.
I did not, not contacted Beverly Kissick. I'll have to do it by mail. I thought I had her telephone number. I know I talked to her a couple of years ago on the phone, but I can't find it. I've looked for a week, and I guess I better give up and write a letter and, and have her call me. So it'll be next week before I have any information on her, but I will try to get in contact with her.
Sounds great.
Sorry about that, I just couldn't find it.
That's for that request in the closing.
Yeah.
Clear down there by 7:00 in the southeast part of the county, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I commend them for the work they've done over in Barnard area on the last snow. I was, they've done as good as they can do. It's a mess. It's a mess in my yard, it's a mess where I'm feeding cattle. The roads are soft. I was pleased what I've seen, that he graded, that he did a pretty good job in not removing all the material and getting the snow knocked down a little bit. And they did work on the highway, and that was appreciated.
We have crews out both Saturday and Sunday.
How does that work for this week? Is that just overtime over the weekend, or are they expected to come full-time this week, or?
It depends on what's going on and what we have to get done. I may allow them to use it for comp time if we're not busy, but if we have something going on we need to do, then it'll be for overtime. Obviously Saturdays will, that will have to go as overtime, so.
Do they go out evening too, or not?
We try to do daylight.
Yeah, sure, for safety. Sure, I just wondered.
There were a few guys that were out fairly late in the evening after dark, but we tried to limit that.
Sure, I understand. I'm just curious how their schedule was, because we may have another weekend of it coming up here.
Yeah. Everyone's excited about it.
Zero degrees Saturday night.
That'll help us, though. Hopefully.
Easier to.
It could hurt us a little bit, too.
Maybe easier to travel.
Very true.
Anything else?
I believe that will be it.
Thank you.
You all have a wonderful week.
You too. Hello.
I was taking them there. If you'll read these for me real quick, I won't, I'm going to act tough. Please, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Only thing that I, I, before you today, I'd like to have the two people that applied for the, for the positions on the board be approved, so we can go ahead and have our elections for officers on January 22nd, which is, which is Gina Fries and Kathy Moss.
Those would be the new ones who haven't served prior?
Right.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, are either one of those taking the place of Jan Dowlin?
No, no.
So how many terms has Jan Dowlin served?
She's served, she's served a total of three terms, different, different times. So her, her term is up.
Right. But you're saying she's staying on?
No, Jan's, Jan's, she's going, she's not going to stay on.
That was my question.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I meant, maybe I.
No, I'm sorry.
You meant neither one of them are going to be president, but someone is replacing her spot?
Yes. Yes, yes. We have seven people that are still on the board, five, and hopefully you'll approve these two, and then we'll go ahead, and I gave you all the three applications.
I see. Last week, we had kind of discussed whether or not we were going to continue to appoint those positions as the commission. My hesitation there is that if we do not appoint those positions, we are, we have, we have funded the council on aging 100% of their budget for many years, and we've also appointed the board members, which then makes them subject to open records and open meetings, which means they have to be open to the public. If we choose not to appoint the positions, then they will not be subject to open meetings or open records, which means they would not ever have to disclose where the money goes, to whom, when, or anything like that. So there is a little bit of consideration there on how we continue to structure and/or fund this particular organization. Do you follow me on that?
Well, these are the bylaws here, and I've made a couple of changes that was suggested by the, by the commission.
Okay. So you were talking about eliminating the need for the county commission to approve, right?
Yes.
And that's exactly what I'm referring to. If that happens, which I'm not necessarily opposed to for any particular reason, but I'm saying if that happens, then it really makes your organization freestanding, and you don't necessar, you can still choose to, but you don't necessarily have to be state-mandated to comply with open records requests or have open meetings.
And Alexis, I think it should still be that way.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing we're changing is the county commissioners not approving the board members. They could be, because they're volunteer anyway, they're not getting paid, but you, you would still have the authority over, you know, when we submit a budget, we have to show you where every penny is spent.
Right. Well, yes, we, we would have, we would be able to fund or not fund in any dollar amount, but the only requirement then for your group as a 501(c)(3) would be to give a report once a year. And, I mean, the best way to ensure that that's thorough is that we could come up with our own report and have you fill it in. You know, we want to know what itemized expenses are, yada, yada, yada. We could figure that out. I'm just saying, if we don't appoint the board members anymore, then you're really not legally bound to give anyone any information, except you would still be required to give one report annually to the county commission, since they'd be the ones funding you.
Unless, unless the county commissioners ask for more?
Well, no, you would not legally be bound to do anything, except for that, because you're a private nonprofit.
Okay.
Just kind of like the senior centers, pretty much. I mean, the difference between how the senior centers have been functioning and the LCCA is that the senior centers do not have any direct oversight by the county commission, but they are receiving public subsidy with tax dollars.
Right.
But really, all this time, they do hold open meetings, and they've been giving up records, but really, all this time, they haven't been required to, whereas the LCCA has, because of this structure.
And I think it's going to be mandated that we have to report to the.
You could have that in your own bylaws.
Exactly. And we can do that.
Out of curiosity, Don, do you happen to know who chartered this in the beginning as far as, was that before you, the LCCA, the formation of the LCCA? Do you have a mission statement?
Uh, it should be right there in the bylaws, isn't it? We do have a mission statement.
I don't think so.
We do have a mission statement.
I was kind of interested in seeing that, just.
I can get you that.
You said on here you had one other person applied, but you disagreed, you agreed not to go forward with that person, huh?
Yes, sir.
What, any special reason why?
Yes, and I'll tell you what that was. The gentleman that applied for that thinks the money should be going to the community centers and not to the senior centers, and he's strictly against Sylvan Senior Center. And so that's going to cause conflict for the seniors in Lincoln, or Sylvan Senior, or Sylvan. There's no reason to have that conflict, except we're trying to get away from conflict right now. So that's the only reason, and he and I both had the agreement that if that was the case, that he wouldn't come on the board, and so.
Thinks what money should be going to what community centers, just for clarification there?
All the money that, senior centers shouldn't be getting any money, according to the charter, the new, the old charter that was written, the money was supposed to be going to the, uh, community centers, not to the senior centers. And the old charter can't be found, so.
Oh, okay, you're saying the, the.
Original charter, for, for the, for the community centers, not for the LCCA, or rather, the LCA and Sylvan Senior Center.
Yeah, I don't know that that's accurate, but.
I hope not. That was, that's what we said, though.
So I guess two questions I have, if, if you're going to reestablish your board, do you have plans for the money that you already have stored in savings? I think at this ti, and I'm just guessing, they have somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000 this particular organization that has been given by the commission over the years. And so do you have plans for, does the board have plans for that, the mon, the funds that you already have in, in savings? And is the mission for this particular organization changing at all, since some of the conversation has been whether or not the senior centers would be directly funded from the commission at this point, rather than funded through that group?
Now, I cannot speak for the LCCA. I'm just, I'm just an concerned senior citizen, and that's why, and I'm on the board, and they want to elect new officers in January to run this whole, have the seven, could have been new bylaws, then I'll make seven, and so I just want to have them approved today, if at all possible. As far as where the money goes, I can't answer that, Alexis, because I'm not, I'm not on the executive board.
And the executive board has been deciding where the money goes?
More or less they do, yes.
Who's on that board?
Well, there was Jan Dowlin, Liz Winkler, Charlene DeWitt, and, let's see, we had four of them, Charlene DeWitt, and Jan Dowlin, president, of course.
But she, she had them left now, so they'll reappoint somebody else within that board. Okay.
Well, they're all off the board now.
Oh.
See, so now we have to elect a new board.
Okay.
So we, so we know what, what our mission is.
Right. I'm going to make a suggestion for our board. I think at this point, we should continue to at least appoint the, the new members who want to come on, because at this time, it keeps them under the requirement of having open meetings and open records. But I would still like to see some follow-up as far as where that money is supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, spent, that you already have, that we've already commissioned to you, and then what the actual mission statement for the organization is, because in my understanding of just everything that's gone on in the past two years, let's say, the whole function of the LCCA has been to collect the money from the commission and then disperse it as they see fit to the senior centers. That has caused a lot of controversy. In addition to that, the board has paid for a full-time employee whose main job was to provide shift counseling, which is, do you know that?
I know, not much.
It's the, what do they call it? It's the different parts of the Medicare plan that you can add to your, they have like part A.
Like supplemental.
Supplemental, that's the word we're looking for. Thank you.
That's a volunteer program, but we was paying that person a full year's wages when she should have been paid those three months, you see? But we were paying her 40 hours a week, paying her insurance and her retirement, 100%.
This person's resigned now, right there.
Correct.
Do you have plans on replacing that person like that?
Yes, we do.
Full, full-time or part-time?
No, no, just part-time. That's not a full-time position.
No benefits to it?
No benefits.
Okay.
That's what the board's talking about now?
Yes.
Well.
And I'm new here, obviously, and don't know all this stuff. So right now, the, the money goes, our real wind, I don't know if anybody goes to, the Lincoln Council on the Aging, right? And you guys disperse that to like the Lincoln Senior Center and Sylvan Senior Center, right?
If they needed, if they need a freezer or a deep sink or something, the LCCA would help support, pay for that, and that's where the extra money goes. It'd be the same for the new flooring over at Sylvan, we paid for that, you know?
But now, like other facilities, say if they need a roof or something, do you guys pay for that, or what? How does that go?
I can't answer that, because I'm on the executive board. Once again, you're asking me questions that, I mean, the board should, we should be discussing that at our meetings, you know?
And are there any other places we spend that money besides, we're going to pay a part-time director possibly?
Absolutely.
And also, so see, Lincoln Senior Center, Sylvan Senior Center, any other place you spend money on?
No, no.
Not, not prior to now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I understand something, is that the money that had been collected in years past, before I even came on, there was starting, when I first started, $90,000. I even came on, there was starting, when I first started, ninety thousand. But we've been paying, they did, they held a lot of the money back, because they said Sylvan hadn't been compliant, Lincoln, LCCA hadn't been in compliance. And that's what I asked, I asked for accountability. Well, there's been no accountability for over twenty years. Because the person who's running that has been intimidating other board member. Well, now, that person is gone. So, and we want to get on the right track with the new board members, know what the mission statement is. And as far as I'm concerned, is to, is to get programs and keep seniors in their home longer. And that's what our mission statement is about now, is helping seniors stay in their home longer, applying programs they could be going out to, and participating in, to keep them in helping. So that's what it's all about right now. So, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm obviously got to learn this stuff, so thanks.
I think my, my biggest concern for the organization is, what will they do with that money? What will they do with future money? If their mission is to, what it says in the ad is to help keep elderly in their homes--
That's right.
Then what can they provide to do that? Because up until now, what I've seen them providing is shit counseling. And shit counseling doesn't necessarily help them stay in their homes. I mean, it's, it's a necessity, and it's very helpful, but there are other resources for it. People will drive clear from Salina up here. We had someone come to Sylvan from Ellsworth. So you can get shit counseling in this region fairly easily. We don't necessarily have to pay for that. Other pay listers don't pay for it. People volunteer to learn how to do it, and then they just help their neighbors and friends and, and other people in the community. And so, I think the board needs to come up with a reason to legitimize their budget, if they're going to continue to come to the commission to fund something. If you're, in other words, if you're going to hire someone and you're going to have a staff, what are they going to do? Is kind of the question, that I feel like has not been answered.
Well, they still have, they still have to work on Medicare, retirement, benefits, social security. There's all kinds of health questions. Though, we have older people coming in almost every day, asking those questions, to Becky Rathman. And she answers, she bests her knowledge, and if she doesn't know, they shall contact Manhattan, or she'll contact our health department here. We have a lot of resources, that, but, like I said, the person's not going to be funded a hundred percent. And so, we're going to be saving almost thirty-six thousand dollars a year off the budget already, just by hiring a part-time person.
I would move that we appoint Jeanine Freeze and Kathy Moss to Lincoln County Council on Aging.
Is Marge Schneider also there?
She's still there.
Oh, that's, oh, redo. She's staying. Second.
You have everybody's application--
I have, yes, I do. I have a motion and a second to appoint Jeanine Freeze and Kathy Moss to the Lincoln County Council on Aging, for, this would be a two-year term.
Two-year term.
For their first two-year terms.
First two-year term.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And I'll get you a mission statement.
Please.
I'll do that for you.
Please.
Once we have our meeting on the twenty-second, and we'll give you that on February, if anything can.
And if the board wants to bring us an update as far as what their future plans are--
Exactly.
That'd be great. I think it's kind of been a big question for a while now. Before proceeding you, you know, that's, I'm not saying this new board doesn't have a plan. I don't think there was a plan before.
There wasn't. There wasn't. And, and I'm hoping that things will change and get better for the LCCA, and the way they look, they will be. So, we'll move from the office. I know you're busy, I got to get out of here.
Okay, thank you for bringing us the letters, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Is David still out in the hall? Is David Doe in the hallway? David Doe, is he in the hallway?
Yeah, yes, yes. You're up, you're up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll be right back.
Okay, yep.
Thank you for seeing me today. I'm just going to read through briefs that I have on my current activities and, and requests that I have. Tuesday, January eighth, there was a planning meeting with the representatives from the USD 299, Kdam, Kansas Division of Emergency Management, First World Fire Rescue, the CERT team, Blue Cell, LC, Lincoln County Hospital, Public Works, Central Valley Ag, the Health Department, Lincoln Park Manor. EMS was on a call, referenced prior to the start of this meeting, and they had to transport a patient. And law enforcement agency had previously scheduled a meeting with KBI, so they weren't available to be at the planning meeting, discussing the upcoming exercise that we have coming on March twenty-third. Wednesday, January ninth, there was a kickoff meeting for the Lower Solomon-Saline Flood Plane Mapping Project. At this meeting, we will discuss the scope, or it was discussed, the scope, in more detail as to where the need refinement provides some flood plane mapping 101, go over the anticipated project timeline, and answer any questions. All of Mitchell and Ottawa counties and their communities will be included in the project. For communities outside of Mitchell and Ottawa County, this is a good opportunity to discuss your community's mapping and mitigation needs. Public Works Director Michael O'Hare and I attended this meeting, and at the time, Kansas Department of Agriculture, KDA, is primarily focusing on this project. However, we were told that KDA was hopeful of having some mapping done for Lincoln County by this summer. Lincoln County and the communities within Lincoln County have never been mapped, not even an old paper map exists. In two thousand and four, Lincoln County did choose to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, an FIP, so citizens do have the option to purchase flood insurance if they so choose to. Governor Collier rescinded the Executive Order nineteen dash oh-one, rescinding the draft declaration that was enacted March thirteenth of two thousand and eighteen. With the new year, I am requesting to have Brandon Cochran as a representative appointed for the Emergency Medical Services, replacing Brett Kingen, on the LEPC. If he is unable to attend, I would request that Shiloh Florence be appointed as his designate. I would request to have First World Fire Captain Jared Heinzey as a representative appointed for firefighting, replacing Jeff White, the Westfall Assistant Fire Chief, on the LEPC. I would request to have the chairperson for the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners as a representative appointed for state, local officials, replacing Commissioner Terry Finch, on the LEPC. With the appointments, I will need documentation referencing the appointments. Dawn is familiar with this process, so she has done this previously for other appointments. Kansas Division of Emergency Management, Kdam, is hosting an LEPC tabletop exercise on Tuesday, February nineteenth, from nine o'clock to three o'clock, at the Rolling Hills Zoo Conference Center. With this exercise, Kdam has made it a requirement for the counties to participate. They must have teams of at least four to ten representatives from their LEPC available for this exercise. Registration deadline is January twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. The registration process can be completed on KS train. The exercise will consist of a jeopardy-like, excuse me, the exercise, this exercise will, I think I have some exercises running together. Lincoln County is also hosting a exercise March twentieth. Reference the North Central, um, North Central Healthcare Coalition, excuse me, is having an exercise here at the Methodist Church. Primarily, primary players in that are healthcare, whether it's the hospital, the health department, emergency management, just going over notifications of services that are provided for those people. Again, on Saturday, March twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, from eight o'clock to five o'clock, Lincoln County is hosting a full-scale exercise that will be testing response capabilities of EMS, law enforcement, USD 299, Lincoln Park Manor, and Lincoln County Hospital. This exercise is being facilitated by the Blue Cell, LC, through hazardous materials preparedness grant, HMEP. And this will be out in the area of the county pumps on, on west, on the west end of town on Ninth Street. With the training that I requested, and the commissioners authorized that the department heads for Public Works, Emergency Medical Services, and the Health Department, myself could attend this training in College Station, Texas. After the request was approved, I contacted Chris Murphy, the project coordinator, and was advised that most of, most, that the most from one jurisdiction that can attend the program at one time is two individuals. This is so that responding jurisdictions slash agencies don't have a large representation and discussion ensues about, this is how we do it back home, and then they totally disregard the information that's, that's given to them. The Health Department Administrator, Ladona Reiner, and Katie Gardner, and RN, that is the education preparedness, emergency preparedness coordinator for LCH, have gotten signed up for the class, June third through the seventh. And Public Works Director Michael O'Hare and I have gotten signed up for the, for the June seventeenth through the twenty-first class. Katie Gardner is an appointee to the LEPC. We are just in the waiting process now. The closer the beginning of the training session, then the TEACH program will communicate with us via email to get travel itinerary and lodging in place to attend their facility. The next, the next piece of paperwork in your packet is just reference the tabletop exercise going on down at Rolling Hills, reference the Local Emergency Planning Committee. And again, Kdam has requested that you have four, at least a minimum of four representatives from each of your LEPCs. And again, the North Central Region has twelve counties in the region, but so far, for Lincoln County, I have myself, law enforcement, the hospital, and pub, um, public, excuse me, community groups are, so far, have made themselves available for this exercise. So at this time, we do have representation from four people. So we will be able to attend and participate in this exercise. The last piece of paperwork that I have is just a packet of information, kind of talks about what emergency management's job duties are. And, and you don't have to read it right now, but I wanted the new chairperson, excuse me, commissioner, commissioner, excuse me, to have paperwork available that, that defined my job duties. And should he have any questions at any point, then he would be able to ask those.
No, thank you, David.
I'm sorry?
Is you not going to?
No, but I can get you one. I can get you one. In fact, you can have the one right there. So my primary reason for being here today is just requesting appointments on the LEPC for the, the chairperson for the commissioners, and then the fire representative, and then EMS, or their designate.
We probably have to wait on Alexis before we make those appointments.
Okay. And again, I don't need an answer right now, but--
Yeah, I got them circled. Three of them, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct, three. Mm-hmm.
All right.
Great.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy? Are you wanting to address the commissioners?
Have you made it through the long reading today yet? I met with you last week, and at that time, you did ask me to bring the bylaws and the mission statements, which I did, and I had called to get on the agenda this morning so I could leave it to you, but I'm at twelve fifteen, so I am sorry. But I do have that information for all of you--
Okay.
And a copy of it in a file. My hopes would be that you would save those kinds of information so that you can refer to it when you get questions coming in from council members, so you'll know who, or when, or what is actually happening out there. And I've not only included the senior, the bylaws from the council, but the bylaws from the Lincoln Senior Center and the bylaws from the Sylvan Senior Center also, and a conflict of interest statement from Manhattan, so that you're more clear on that. And also, a copy of what I passed out last week, and I gave you a copy of it also, but there's another copy in here also. My question from just meeting, listening to Mr. Lovelace, is what positions were those two folks filling?
Let me see.
Let me see, you are District Two, right? And you are District--
One. Thank you.
And you are District--
Three.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't--
And I have--
Kathy Freeze and Kathy Moss.
Kathy Moss.
Jeanine Freeze.
And Jeanine Freeze.
Yeah.
I was just saying, Alexis, that I brought the--
Oh, thank you.
The bylaws and the mission statements.
Okay.
And the mission statements I yellow highlighted. And then also, from the, I don't know if you, Aljo and you, Randy, got a copy of the ad that was put in the paper?
Yes, we did, this morning.
Here we did. Did you get it?
I don't know. We made a copy of it for you, or Dawn made a copy of it for you last time, so I'm not sure. But I did put the copy of what I passed out last time in the file, so that those are for you to keep for future whatever happens. There's the Lincoln Senior Center, the bylaws, the Sylvan Center bylaws, and then the Council on Aging bylaws is the first. And then there's a conflict of interest statement. And I was just asking Alexis of what two positions the people that you just approved are filling.
Well, one would be Jan, because he said she's leaving.
No, well, they're, they're by, they're by district, by your council.
He did not identify those, but I have two--
You need to know where they're, where they're filling. What positions are they filling?
Well, it says District Three is Jeanine Freeze, and at-large is Kathy Moss.
Okay.
That's what I have on this one.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't--
That would work.
But my question is District Three, so who's at law, who, well, it's because they're changing it over--
She applied for District One, and then at the November meeting, we said, you know--
She doesn't live in District One.
Correct.
But where does Jan Dallin live, District Two?
She's in Barnard, District Two.
She's not on. She's not on there.
Right.
What I'm saying, they were replacing her, but obviously, it wasn't the same structure.
Because you had, you had ten people, and they're reducing it to seven. So, District Two has always had more people on the council than other districts. So, that's why. So when they cut them, they'll cut that part. So that would make, that could be, the only other question would be is if there was any, any conflict of interest with the Lincoln Senior Center, having any officers on there. At one time, they would not allow a Lincoln Senior Center to be on the council, because they were an officer at the center. And if you're voting or not looking at financial statements, you don't want to have a conflict of interest. So, just to make sure that, I don't think Kathy Moss is, but that would be my only question I would have. And then Jeanine Freeze should be District Three. If that's what it says, that's great. And then everyone else should have applied, except for Marge Schneider, she was automatically on, Judy Albers was automatically on, Charlene Watson was automatically on. They did not need to apply there. That list that I gave you before tells that time that they serve, which is one more year each. And then you would have, those would be open. So in one year, you're looking at doing this again, with different applications, applicants. Okay. Then one other comment that I had was that, at a, no, not November, October meeting, it was brought up, this is back when the area coordinator was discharged, or let go, or whatever you want to call that, there was a question over what they would do with a half-time person. And at that time, they talked about, and I do have the documentation of that, that they would pay that person twelve dollars and have more hours, thirty hours. Yet, they were cutting the area coordinator down to eleven dollars and twenty hours. So I'm just saying, if you're going to hire an area coordinator, I just heard somebody say that that would be less, it should be half as much, not a third, if you're going to only hire an area coordinator for half-time.
I thought he said thirty-six thousand less.
That is what he said. That, he did say that.
I'm just saying, you need to look at that, then if that is what that is. Because if you're offering another person more per hour to fill in there, and you got rid of somebody for less hours per hour, that is, could be construed as something legally, that the legal system might want to look at. Of why you would let somebody go and then turn around and pay somebody else more.
Have you ever thought about that? Dawn, I'm going to ask you to repeat yourself, and I'm sorry, I know you explained this to me already, but why did the auditors say that we had to take on the bus boards employee as a county employee?
Because we paid their expenses and paid their, or, we basically paid for all of their expenses, their benefits, and they, they have the same hours that we had, and we even offered them the office and our, so therefore-- them the office and our, so therefore...
So how is that different if we, in the past?
Because we send them the money and they pay all the things.
Okay.
We actually write out all their books.
Okay.
For, which is their books.
Oh, you write out all individuals?
And we write the checks for the table.
So if you didn't do that for the bus board, if you expected them to have their own financial meetings and take care of their own bookkeeping, then it would change that?
It's intentional.
That'd be interesting.
One other thing.
Okay.
And then you can, it's been brought up in the last couple of weeks that I'm not doing my job as the 18-county board member. I've heard that by a person here who interrupted a couple of weeks ago when I was in here, and that I'm not supposed to be able to attend the council meetings. So I've asked the Area Agency on Aging in Manhattan, and they have in their orientation what the job description of a 18-county board member is. And I am doing my job, and I'm doing even more than my job. I'm hoping that you all are knowing that I'm doing my job. I don't know about the other one that you have represented that's supposed to be on the 18-county board. But I am supposed to make reports to the commission every two months. I sit here just about every week, so if there's something comes up, and Terry has asked me twice to bring information to you, and I have done that. So I'm not trying to take up anybody's time by doing that, but I am available to do that. And we have a meeting every two months, and we get a stack of information that I, as you said, on any board, you know, you get a lot of stuff and you have to read through it and decide what it is important and what isn't important.
Along that line, Cindy, I don't know. Hey, Dawn, have we still been getting those meeting reports?
I believe so.
I haven't seen one for a long time. I just wondered.
I don't know.
They come from Manhattan.
They're supposed to come directly to you.
Yeah, but I haven't seen one, so, for quite a while.
And I actually...
There was a mail letter thing?
No.
It's the minutes and the action.
It's the whole thing. And I get it by email, which I like a hard copy, so I have to turn around and print it all out. And it looks, this time, it looks about like this thick. I printed one out, and I, if knowing that, I can always bring one to you.
They're always colored paper, and I just...
Yeah, they do that. I couldn't afford the color.
Yeah. Well, the one color is executive, one color is general.
Right, and that's meant to confuse you, actually. But, because that's why I like to print it out beforehand and go through it and be prepared for the meeting. Because we do, and board member members are looking at a lot of things going on at the So anyway, just to let you know that. Did you want a copy of what my job description is?
No, I trust you, Cindy.
Do you want a copy of what my job description is?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to ask you, what do you do?
Well, I do all those things.
And then who do you report to, though?
And then I report to the 18, I report right now to Tom Maxwell, who's the president of the board.
Which is what? 18-county?
Yes.
18-county Council on Aging?
And the board hires the CEO at Manhattan.
Out of curiosity, do they have the statistics already gathered on which counties do you have a coordinator, if they're paid, or who does schick, or how many?
I tried to wade through that about six months ago, and I've gotten, I ended up calling, I may have shared that, I don't remember, calling each, trying to find out the information because it's not being compiled.
That's what, you know, it'd be nice to have a comparison just to see, because we've spent a lot of money on that over the years.
And I will pass that on to the new president who takes over this, this meeting, this next meeting, which is Tom Maxwell from Beloit. And I think you know him. He took J. Rowe's place, who was also from Beloit. Part of the thing that I do is do assessments for them on their food services for the different senior centers. And I brought copies of those, too, to prove that I'm doing those. And I also brought a copy of what Lincoln's was. They run on a, on the food services part of it. We do the assessment on whether or not...
Friendship meals?
On friendship meals. And doesn't that mean, that doesn't mean that a senior center, we still, if you bring in meals, we do an assessment on that also, if they're made. So I did assessments this year on three of them, more than anyone else, Holly Rude, Tipton, and Glenn Elder. You cannot do the one that you live in, because it's a conflict of interest. I can't, I live in one of those places.
And you're looking for...
I'm looking for...
What are you looking for?
When we do it, we look through, make sure that everything is accessible, and you know the Lincoln Senior Center is not necessarily accessible.
Accessible for?
Handicapped people.
Handicapped people.
And that has been stated before, and when, you know, when you're giving out money here to do renovation there, that might be something you would want to consider. And that did come back in their assessment, which I don't do their assessment, but it has come up every year. They're trying to switch off the different people doing the assessments, that there's never any president's building.
So this not only assess, this doesn't assess just the meals, it assesses the access to the building?
Exactly.
Access to the dining?
Right. You know, we'd like to see, we'd like to have a big space with, with round tables, you know, and not be in a small area that maybe is more than the fire coat. There's all kinds of things to consider when you have elderly people who may, I'm just saying, might have more handicaps or disabilities than others. Maybe not, but maybe. So those are all things that, if you're in charge of giving the money out, then you need to know that information, in my opinion.
Food?
Food, absolutely food.
So I mean, are the meals prepared?
Meals, taste of meals?
Taste the meals?
Are the menus, what they say they're going to be, are they changed a lot, or are they consistent? Even if meals are brought in, you have to, we have to go in, and we have a tech thing that measures the heat of the food, all of that, the freshness of it, and we have to taste the food, so...
Do you interview?
It takes about a day to do each assessment.
Do you interview the participants?
Yes. We interview the cook, and the site manager, and the assistant cook.
And what about the people that are eating?
And we talk to them, too. Although, we're meant, we have to do the site manager, the cook, and everything.
Does that Flint Hills area in Aging, does provide funds then for food and stuff here in Lincoln?
They are the people that do it.
They do pay for it.
The senior center is not responsible for it. It is Manhattan that provides it.
And now, Lincoln Council on the Aging, we provide some funds, right, to the senior center, right?
To the senior center.
What does that go for?
That's one you'll have to ask the senior centers.
But you're, you're providing food for the senior center, do you pay...
Well, the friendship meals are provided there, and so there's, you know, we are, because three or four staff members in Manhattan cannot get to all the places where in 18-county where meals are being served. So they train us to go out and do those assessments.
And like the employees there, do you fund them?
That's a good question. They are paid for, paid by Manhattan, but each senior center or location can pay in addition. And that is what happens at the Lincoln Senior Center, because it is minimum wage. And so some people feel like that might be a reason why you don't get enough good people to stay, so you want to pay more or in addition to. However, looking at being paid, most of them, senior centers are volunteer. Site manager is volunteer also. So, and Manhattan is looking to cut money everywhere. So they really would like more volunteers. We donate our mileage, we donate things like that to go out and do these things. And so, but certain senior center may reimburse for mileage to have somebody deliver meals. That's their decision, and it should come out of their pocket. Depends on which pocket you're looking at, I guess.
But currently, again, a little confusion, like we have our, Becky Retha runs it here, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Cooks and all the others. And then we have cooks, we pay, right?
Correct. Manhattan pays them.
Manhattan pays them. Which is the Flint Hills Council on Aging?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. But the Lincoln Senior Center pays them more in addition to it. So you could drive north of here and see somebody else that doesn't get paid as much, but has the same responsibility.
Okay. So they're funded by both places, basically?
Here in Lincoln, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but I'm, the question has been before, and I know that was a question with, with the commissioners before, over which was fundraiser money and which was mill levy money. And probably, mill levy money shouldn't go to that, just saying, so. However you want to look at it down the road, that's your decision. Hot potato.
I'd just like to know where the funding we provide, what it's spent on specifically.
Yeah. Well, that's, you have to really look at, at each senior center to know where it's spent specifically. You can look at the Council on Aging and see where they've given mill levy money, but whatever else money is, you know, I can't answer those questions. Those are from senior centers. What the Manhattan pays for is like all of the, well, they have huge paperwork of all of their expenses that they have. And right now, their biggest expense is in Emporia, in redoing a senior center there. And the senior centers can ask Manhattan. In fact, that's how Sylvan got their first loan, was from the Council on Aging in Manhattan to buy the building.
So does this Flint Hills Council on the Aging coordinate with the...
And Lincoln got one, too, the loan. If you dig back far enough, you can find this information, and I can bring it to you if you need it.
No, there was a citizen in Sylvan that donated it, because her name was still on, is still on.
No, it's, she took a loan out, too. I have that information. And that, that should be from a person that has the keys to the safe deposit box. It was in that information.
I've never seen that. That's interesting.
Really? Okay. Because there were two loans in order to buy that. And most, most senior centers do start from getting money from the Council on Aging. It's not much, but they do have a loan from there.
So do you cooperate or work with the Lincoln Council on Aging?
I attended every meeting since October 2016.
Do you work with them hand in hand?
No, I give a report. I'm on the agenda every month to give a report from Manhattan.
But you and your...
And if they want to ask me questions, they can.
So you and your board, this Flint Hills Council on Aging, is separate from Lincoln Council on the Aging?
Absolutely.
And don't really work together on providing funding like to our Lincoln Senior Center, right?
Right.
You do it separately?
There's, we don't, we don't give any...
There's no coordination on nothing?
Right, right.
Well, maybe there should be. Maybe it'd be operate a little better, huh?
Well, they can always ask for help, but I can't tell you that anybody's going to ask for advice.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on here, that's all.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Did you want a copy of the different reports from the assessments? They kind of, they're very general, they're not on a point system. It's like excellent is best, and then there's great, and then there's very good, and then there's good.
Give Lincoln's?
Yes.
I'll look at Lincoln's.
Anybody else want Lincoln's?
I'll look. This looks like colored paper.
Yes, I know. And you know why I got in trouble for that? Because I didn't take, turn off the yellow toner. So sorry, and thanks for pointing that out. I'm also on the Committee for Advocacy, which is the committee that works with going to Topeka and advocating for Medicare and Medicaid and Social Security for seniors. We've been busy. And I have all of this paperwork for you.
There we go. Get your hand out.
I got it, and I read it. Thank you. I know he typically, yeah. He typically does read through it, so I figured I would read it.
Sure.
Any other questions? Just so you know, I mean, I can't ask, I will be asking question, I can ask your questions at the meeting in Manhattan. And there's been citizens who've been coming to me and ask, because they've seen in the newspaper that I'm on there, and asking, why does this happen, and why does that happen?
Well, like I asked you...
And I'm learning, too. I'm just, this is my first year on it.
Well, I just, we, I don't know if there's duplicative services here. I mean, and I'm not, maybe that's not bad, or, I'm not good, I don't know. I'm just saying, you have a Flint Hills Council on Aging, you do your task, and I guess they provide funds. But then we have a Lincoln Council on Aging, which we fund, too. Then they provide funds, too, the Lincoln Senior Center, Sylvan Senior Center. So do we have duplicative services? Yeah, but do, do we...
I'll speak for that.
Yeah. Alexis, you probably know that.
Well, I think we do have some overlapping that is unnecessary, based on how things have been set up in the past, and what I was kind of touching on earlier. I think Bob is coming with the idea that there's going to be some transformation and reformation at the Council on Aging, which is great. I just haven't seen anything written down as far as what their plans are. But one of the things, the problems is, I have been in contact with some of the people with Manhattan, and, and they even have a branch office in Salina. So they will send that person or someone from Salina clear out to Sylvan Grove if you need to have schick counseling done, or if you have specific requests for certain things that they can provide you a resource. So basically, they have a sheet, and I don't have anything with me right now, but they have a sheet full of all the different services that they can help to provide. And some of those even include working with other organizations like OCCK. So our county gives money every year to OCCK, and they come and help provide transportation for people who are having medical assistance, you know, for whatever services they need. And some of what I think Lincoln has been paying for is for basically a phone operator, where you, we were paying someone to answer phone calls and questions, and really, what they were doing is rerouting them to the correct agency, because there are agencies that are already state and federally funded with our tax dollars from our income tax and other property tax. So that I would call an overlapping. You know, we're, we're using local tax funds to, what we were doing was providing a job for someone who was really just rerouting people's questions to the, to the correct organization or service. But we already have that, because you can call from here to Salina. Now, the argument was, and I know the Health Department has said, well, it's nice to have someone that you can come and talk to. So we were housing someone in an office where a local person could come, because sometimes it's not always easy to do over the phone. But at the same time, the question was, is that a full-time position?
And most of those services are volunteer. So the question again comes, do you pay someone to do that, or do you train people to do it?
Encourage different community groups to get involved in doing it.
Correct. And I understand that. And I do, you know, as a person that, you know, I used Teresa about homestead tax, because it was very interesting this past year. It was something you needed to study about whether or not you could apply for it or get it. And, but I could also call a toll-free number and get the same information. It's just, you know, for me, it was more private to do it on a one-to-one basis. But keep in mind, she's getting the same information at the same place. It's just kind of how you want to spend your money. Now, other counties that are really big, huge populations, more...
Need your organization.
That is an excellent service. I mean, I think there's two in Celine County that they pay extra. One is at the city county building, and one is at the Salina Healthcare Clinic.
Well, while we're on the subject, I think there's a misconstrued notion, what Bob said earlier, is that they want to pay someone to help with, things that he listed were not necessarily, yeah, those weren't necessarily things that the county should be funding for someone to get as a service.
And all of those things are on a sheet, just like you said, that has it all there, and it has the information on it, and that's provided out of Manhattan to give to each individual. You turn 60 booth, you get all kinds of information, and where, things that you can call and contact. It was just like a nice thing to have, where you could be here, but the whole idea that that's where you get the information was maybe not as correct as knowing, maybe it didn't make you as independent as it could. It made you be dependent, in a way. You know, you had to kind of look at it.
Who funds this Flint Hills Council on Aging? The state?
Yes.
And federal. It's the, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And county, too?
Well, if there's a small part of it goes to the county. Well, if there's a small part of it goes to county.
Yeah, you're right, we contribute, yeah, ours is what, three thousand, two thousand?
It's under three thousand.
Two to three, somewhere in there.
And I think it's even, maybe less.
So we fund Flint Hills Council on Aging, then the Lincoln Council on the Aging, which is, you know.
And actually, the Council on Aging picked up that fourth payment, we used to pay all but two hundred dollars, and then they started paying it.
Yeah, so, but it was taken out of the money.
It's still mill levy money, right.
Okay.
Lots of decisions.
Well, and just for your clarification, I've been asking, like, I wanted the mission statement, which basically just says that they want to help keep elderly in their homes, and, and that's noteworthy for sure, but my question is, the mill levy that we have that's assigned for that is up to two mills, which we've given the last three years seventy-five thousand, a flat dollar amount, instead of calculating the full two mills, and that saved us money, tax money. Um, but my question is, we, we don't have the original charter resolution, and my understanding is that it says service programs for the elderly, so I've kind of asked for some follow-up, and Jennifer O'Hare's been working on the nursing home thing, so she hasn't focused on that, but I would like to hear from her and whatever resources she's going to gather, what, how we need to interpret that, what are we interpreting as services for the elderly? Because that one was interesting, it said, um, that they were helping to facilitate a, a location and a, I, it was in the paperwork you just gave us, but basically, I mean, the senior centers serve that purpose, so there's been a lot of discussion at the senior centers about what does the Council on Aging do, if the senior centers are also able to provide, like you're saying, overlapping services, can someone at the senior center make that same phone call and get that same information for someone, or do we have to fund a separate council that has a full-time position with benefits and everything like it was? So.
Basically, it's the same thing, I worked at OCCK for a long time, and it was the same thing, is the networking and getting the information out of all the services and agencies that are available to help you, because you just don't know that, you, you grow older and all of a sudden.
And they're already funded with tax dollars on the state level.
They're already funded that way, and, and you have a right to use them. It's just getting that information out there.
So many people don't know they have the, right, or the access, or the, and the procedures to do it.
That's exactly right.
I'll give you the perfect example, our local bus, you know, according to its own, it doesn't, I don't know if it's in the bylaws, or if it just has like its own little handbook, but what I've read, you know, you only have to be, I think, seven or eight years old, and it can be in town or out of town, so really, a lot of local people didn't even know, if your car's broken down, you can get a, you can get a ride clear to Salina to do your shopping, or whatever you need to do, for a few dollars, whatever the, the fee is. And so, with people not knowing that, even about our local services, it's hard to expect them to know about all the other things, but that was kind of supposed to be the role of the Council on Aging, was to let people know, not to take on the role that you have to get it here, and we're gonna fund a hundred percent of whatever you think you're getting out of that office, because that's what it ended up being, and that needs to change.
And I can see how it happened over, because I've gone clear back to the beginning of time and looked at all the minutes, and I can see that sometimes when you have people on council that don't know all of the agencies and services that are available, look towards one person to do it. And it kind of became that they would, they encouraged it, and I, and the one thing I've seen is in the last three months, when we haven't had an area coordinator, we still have some problems on the council. So, you know, you have to look at, it always gets down to personnel.
I think they just have, they have confusion about what their purpose is, period, so, that needs, I think before we fund them.
How do you force people to read bylaws?
But before we fund them, I think they need to tell us what their purpose is, because it's really unclear, it's been unclear.
And they had a training, uh, you know, to learn how to write the bylaws, and learning how to, to have a mission statement, and I, I know they're aware of it, but we had two people that felt they didn't need the training.
And I got, you brought up earlier with, uh, Mr. Loveless too, about that you said they have extra money-saving account, that's probably money that the county's paid for, that's.
We've already given it to them.
So, and I don't know if that's a good policy, that they start banking money, tax dollar money, and I, you know, I don't know if that should be refunded back to the county or used first, before they get more money, you know?
Right.
Because, say we give them seventy-five thousand a year, and they only spend seventy, six fifty, you know, well, they just keep banking, well, they might have two hundred grand in there in twenty years.
They add over a hundred thousand.
Didn't you make a decision within this past year or two years to not fund as much as you had?
We withheld.
Until you spent, they spent down.
Yeah.
Right, this, this past year, we withheld about twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, we, you know, we could fund up, funding things, but we, I don't need to have a, a cash fund on the side, if we do, maybe we're overfunding too much. Of course, I know from year to year, it may differ, so, they may be, you don't want to underfund them either, give them.
But they have more than a hundred and fifty percent of their budget in saving.
Well, yeah, but I, I don't think that's true.
And there's never been anything that I know of, or the commissioners have said, you can't come to us and ask or explain what you need. There's always been an open door policy, that you can come and ask if you have a special program that you don't have funding. As a side note, when I did the research on all of the senior centers in eighteen counties, most end up at the end of the year with two hundred to twelve hundred dollars left in their account. They get money by fundraising, not counting on mill levy, and, but, you know, there are definitely counties out there that look at Lincoln and go, wow, that's great, how did you do that, how did you get that much passed?
Have we received?
So, you've, at some points, you've done a great job.
I mean, that's, that's true, it is, it is a, a bonus, that we do have that resolution, that we can't fund up to, to.
Two mills.
Did, did we?
And I think the state, and I'm not sure, that's something commissioners could check on, does the state have, say, something about it has to minimally be one mill levy for senior services?
No.
I came across that recently.
No, that's totally, that was totally locally generated, that had nothing to do with any kind of state money.
Really?
Did we get a two thousand nineteen budget from OCCA?
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think.
I don't, I don't remember whether we did or not. We just funded them, I mean, basically, we give them.
For twenty nineteen? I don't think so.
I, I don't know that they, I don't think they turned in budgets this year.
No, because I, if I remember, they were spending down.
Yeah.
And so, they had money there, and then, when you do away with a position, there was money left, and that hasn't been filled, so there should still be monies there.
While you were gone, Alexis, L E P C, we need to make some appointments, and you're the chairperson, are you going to?
I will.
I would move to appoint Brandon Cochran, Jared Hainsey, and chairperson, county for L E P C, please. One second.
I have a motion, a second on the floor for L E P C appointments, is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can you second that?
Yes, I seconded it.
That's what I thought. This is Dawn's, with that red book.
Oh, yeah.
And then.
I should get a copy of that, huh?
Do we have any public comment, or questions?
Yeah, in the future, now that we've had a change of leadership, can we have more participation on open, on an open forum, instead of having to be on the agenda? Because other counties do this.
I intend to take public comment.
Okay.
I mean, if, if there's a specific presentation, I think it should be on the agenda, because it takes up time, but we could limit it to three minutes and, you know, take questions at the end.
Because the citizens, they can't not necessarily anticipate ahead time to get this on the agenda, so they can be here, they can come and wait, because we're supposed to be, how do you say, accommodating our citizens, and it, it hasn't been done here in the last ten, fifteen years. So that's my comment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm very open to public comment, I think that's important, and, and sometimes something happens in the meeting that should be addressed right away and not have to wait a week, um, so that's something to consider. And I will say, being that our meetings are sometimes two to three hours, I mean, we're making pretty good money up here, to not have to be accountable as a group in front of anyone any other time. Now, I mean, I know we do other things individually, I spend time on the phone and do other things as an individual, but you can't get an answer unless we're in a group, so, I do think that's important.